Welcome to the Board of -- oh, I have to wait for Bernard.
He just ran to get his papers.
Okay. So, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, September 11th.
September 12th.
Oh, September 12th. How can I -- we're running a little late, about 10 minutes late. So, I'll apologize right off the bat. Anyone have any announcements? Town meeting season is starting to heat up, and I know the Advisory Committee has started scheduling public hearings on warrant articles, and this board is starting to schedule public hearings on warrant articles. We're hearing two of them tonight, a little later. And then Brookline Day, which is -- we're going to be discussing it a little later in the calendar, is coming up, and that's always a fun event.
The B C A N Annual Meeting is Thursday evening. I think it starts at five.
Starts at five.
Goes to seven.
Right.
So, an important organization in town, looking out for seniors' issues, and making sure they can age in place, and advocating on their behalf. So, I plan to be there, and I'm sure I'll see other members of the board there as well.
Okay, so let's move on to the miscellaneous calendar. We have the minutes of September 12th. I have some modifications.
I have some edits as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have basically one edit, and I would like to suggest that in these minutes, as well as any future minutes, when we have resolutions or proclamations, that we put in the full text of the resolved clause, so that people know what it is we're resolving. Last week, the Bahi Clause was changed.
Right.
And people may have read the earlier version online, and should know that the changes were made.
Okay, so, got that, Kate? Okay. So, I'll move acceptance of the minutes of September 5th. All those in favor, Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller, and this is as amended, of course. Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Did you say?
I said aye.
Selectmen Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We have some July 10th executive session minutes. That's -- was -- is that in our packet?
Yes, it was.
Okay. I don't have that. So, what I'm gonna do -- does anyone have any changes?
July 10th. I will receive that.
Okay, so let's hold that for the time being, and we'll come back to that next week. Question of accepting an energy rebate check, this is B, and the amount of $8,000 from National Grid for the installation of condensing boilers at the Aquatic Center. Someone speaking to that?
I was expecting the building official from the Building Department, but I am not sure. Typically, the Building Commission meets at the same time we are, so why don't you just hold off on -- well, I don't see any.
Is this -- does anyone have any questions on this? This is pretty straightforward item.
No, this is pretty much a no-brainer.
Yeah, so I'm willing to vote it without the department head present.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can have the same answer for C.
Okay, so I'll move that we accept the energy rebate check in the amount of $8,000 from National Grid for the installation of condensing boilers at the Aquatic Center and the Unified Arts Building. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And the next item is executing a license agreement with NSTAR, and that one will hold.
Yeah, I can't answer that one.
Okay. And the next one, this is item D, so we're holding C. Item D is the question of adopting a resolution supporting an act relative to protecting consumers of gas and electricity from paying for leaked and unaccounted-for gas. Selectmen Heller, is this one yours?
Yes, there is a -- I believe we have a speaker from someone who's gonna explain the resolution to you.
Ah, okay.
But we have voted on this before, as you know, and our efforts were not as successful as we would have liked, so it's coming up again.
Okay. Why don't you introduce yourselves?
I will, thank you very much. My name's Edward Wall. In fact, I was here that last time and spoke to you, and were you very kindly, and I think with great vision, adopted a resolution supporting the gastic legislation that some of which got into the omnibus bill last year. But this particular portion didn't. It was sent to committee by the T U E Committee, sent to study by the T U E Committee. With me here is Marilyn Ray Smith, who's representing the Brookline Greenspace Alliance, of about 23 environmental groups and community organizing groups, ranging from the Emerald Necklace, to the Sierra Club, to Mothers Out Front, to M C A N, the Boston Climate Act Network. I can't name them all, and I would've given you a list.
And the Brookline Greenspace.
And the Brookline, right.
Can't forget that.
Right. C L F, a whole bunch of people. C L F noted for the piece you might have read about "Into Thin Air," which brought public attention to gas leaks. You have a fact sheet that was given to you. I will just summarize that as you're probably aware, gas leaks, natural gas is 95 percent methane, which is a very potent greenhouse gas. It's about 86 times more powerful than what you consider to be greenhouse gas, which is carbon dioxide, over a 20-year period. And if you look at 20 years from now, I don't want to think about 20 years from now unless we cut down the greenhouse gas emissions in this country, given what's happened in the last couple of weeks. So, I think there are some very important local issues regarding gas leaks, which people may not be totally aware of, and that is 2% to 3% of the gas that's distributed in the local distribution systems escapes. It's a wasted resource, and you're, and me, and I are paying for it. And if you do the numbers, and take the number of 25,000, 26,000, 27,000 dwellings in this community, and you figure an average gas bill of 1,600 bucks a year, and you figure an electricity bill of $600 a year, and you know that a lot of electricity is produced by gas combustion, the savings that can be realized per household is about $60 a household. And if you take all of that together, that's about 3 million bucks a year. That would otherwise go back into the local economy and the people's pockets, and it not only affects me as a homeowner, but affects you as a public official who have a big energy bill that you're paying, the local church, the Y M C A, the Boy Scouts, the local businesses, and all of that has an effect on the economy. So, right now, we're paying for it. And, of course, we really don't want to pay for it, and the problem is that this shouldn't be our problem. We shouldn't be here. But we can give the gas companies, utilities, an incentive to correct them themselves. And that's really a main purpose of this bill, is to give them that incentive and get the legislature to come down and help support that. You may not know, but the last go-around, we went around and got resolutions, including from Brookline, from 37 communities in the state, and those represented 37% of the voting population. So, we basically have, and you are being asked to give a referendum by proxy. What do your citizens want? And we had representatives go to their speaker and say, "Look, my towns voted for this. You gotta put it on that bill." And so, it got on the bill, got into committee, and we got some good gas legislation, but this one never made it out of committee. So, we're going to the residences, or the towns, which are represented by members of the T U E Committee, and many of which were covered last year. And although 37, by the way, 10 voted Republican, and the rest voted Democrat. So, this is a bipartisan-supported bill. So, what we want to do by this is, one, lower the cost of government, and that's taxes, reduce the cost of business, leaving more profit for them by reducing their energy costs, lower the cost of energy for your community, stop paying for a wasted resource. But there's also another benefit here. If you look at someone who's in an apartment, low-income apartment, where the cost of gas is passed on to them, the cost is passed on through an escalator clause in the rental agreement, you're also helping them out, because now there's less cost to pass on to them. So, you're helping your lower-income residents in this town at the same time. So, all of these things militate, I think, for support. I hope you do that. So, and one other benefit, if you reduce the leaks, and each town in the state does that, you also reduce the total amount of gas loss, which then gets back into the system, which then reduces the impact of peak demand. That saved gas can satisfy peak demand and cut down on the need, or the demand for more pipelines and more gas in this state, which I think is a good thing to do. I think we're addicted to gas, and I think we should get off it.
Okay, so, any comments? I certainly support this, and--
I commend you for bringing it forward again, and having the energy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I enjoy it, and I enjoy coming to town, join Brookline, who have done the right thing in the past, and I hope will do the right thing tonight.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just wanted to say Mothers Out Front had a, you know, site visit for some of the biggest leaks in town a couple of weeks ago, and it is quite startling how many leaks we have here in Brookline, because a lot of our infrastructure is so old.
Now, you have about 289 existing leaks right now, with 169 filled last year. The year before, you had more, but as the system continues to deteriorate, just because you fix leak one doesn't mean it doesn't appear next year, or another one doesn't come up beside it, because there's a story I could tell you, but I don't want to take your time. I'd like to entertain you with it.
Okay, so I'll move that we adopt the resolution supporting an act relative to protecting consumers of gas and electricity from paying for leaked and unaccounted gas, accounted-for gas. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We will sign.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. And I see Mr. Simmons. So, let's go back to item C. This is the question of executing a license agreement with NSTAR Electric for a switchgear and transformer replacement project at Town Hall.
Thank you, sorry I was late at the commission meeting. Presently, there's a project underway to replace switchgear that's presently underground in the bowels of the building, dates back to the early '60s. And the switchgear allows two primary lines to be used for the Town Hall complex. So, if one line goes dead, it automatically switches to the other line. We lose power for a few seconds. The switchgear is very, very old, can't get parts for it, and it needed to be upgraded. As it turns out, we cannot put it back into an old Boston Edison vault anymore, because in order to maintain it, you need to be NSTAR crew. So, it has to be on the outside now, and the only location is above the vault, to the backside of the building. So, this license would allow NSTAR to go and service it on our property if they needed to service it, or they needed to manually switch the cables over.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I'll move that we execute a license agreement with NSTAR Electric for a switchgear and transformer replacement project at Town Hall. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one question.
Sure.
I assume this is like above any kind of floodplain that we've had?
Oh, yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, we already did the other -- we did the rebate.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a few temporary alcohol licenses that all appear to be in order.
Yep.
So, I'll move them in omnibus fashion.
Let me just clarify that. I don't think we've seen police approval for item F. That's the B C A N meeting, so I would just propose that we attach the condition--
Right.
-- pending police approval.
Yep. Okay. I'll move that we grant for all kinds -- temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage licenses to Pine Manor College at 400 Heath Street as follows, for a fundraising gala to be held on Saturday, September 16th, from 5:00 to 11:00. For a bar mitzvah to be held on Saturday, September 23rd, from 12:30 to 4:30. For a wedding to be held on Saturday, September 30th, from 5:30 -- from 5:00 P.M. to 11:00 P.M., and for a wedding on Saturday, October 14th, from 6:00 to 11:00. I'll also move that we grant a temporary wine and malt alcoholic beverage sales license to Brookline Senior Center for a B C A N membership event to be held Thursday, September 14th, from 4:00 to 8:00, 93 Winchester Street, and that's pending police approval. And I'll move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverage on town property, non-sales, all types, to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a wedding reception to be held on Saturday, September 23rd, from 4:30 to 11:00. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, so that concludes our miscellaneous calendar. And now, we're on to our main calendar, and the first item is the Boston Athletic Association Half Marathon. Mr. Flannery.
Good evening. Everyone's doing all right this evening? So, I'm Doug Flannery, the Director of Race Operations for the Boston Athletic Association. So, I'm here to request this evening a parade permit, or special permission, to conduct our 17th Annual Boston Athletic Association Half Marathon, being conducted on October 8th, 2017, starting in Franklin Park and ending in the Franklin Park area at White Stadium. For all intents and purposes, the half marathon hasn't changed much since the inception in 2001. The 13.1-mile course is a rolling out-and-back course, primarily along the Emerald Necklace, starting and finishing in the Playstead or White Stadium. The event will take place on October 8th, 2017, which is actually Columbus Day weekend. We have a start time of 8:00 A.M. We have a few wheelchair participants, so that'll actually start around 7:50 A.M., but the main field is at 8:00 A.M. with about 9,000 participants. We do have a time limit of about three hours, and we really gauge that to make sure that everyone gets inside the Franklin Park area and off the main roads, so that we can begin to open up the roads with the cooperation of both Brookline Police Department and the Boston and Mass State Police. Due to some construction impacts around the Casey Arbor Way, there have been a few detours in the past that do not affect the Brookline community, but I just mentioned that, and along by the Franklin Park Zoo as well. The overall bent timeframe is from 8:00 A.M. to 11:00 A.M. for Brookline. We're looking at around the four-and-a-half-mile point to the six-and-a-half-mile point, so we're looking at about 8:20 A.M. to 9:45 A.M. as far as the participants going through the roadways of Brookline. We do have a water station, a medical aid station on Leverett Pond. Those are facilitated by the Boston Athletic Association, our volunteers and our medical coordinators, and we use strong -- or we appreciate all the strong support through Brookline and the Department of Public Works. We have issued, and we will continue to issue, community awareness campaigns for the roadway systems. We continuously monitor our road closures and our road reopening programs to support the communities. Additionally, the town of Brookline is named as additionally insured on our liability insurance policy, and our copy certificates of insurance were previously submitted. So, at this time, I respectfully request that a parade permit be granted for permission to use the roadway systems of Brookline to support our annual half marathon.
So, the streets that are affected, it's basically Pond Avenue over by the Olmsted Park.
Correct.
Between Route 9 and going up to Jamaica Pond.
Correct.
Okay, so, really, the impact on Brookline is just on the edges, kind of, our neighborhood?
Yep.
So, you're gonna be running this year, Selectmen Franco?
No, I'll actually be in Chicago, running a different race.
Oh. I know some people there that'll be working with you on that race. I'll let Mike Nishi know.
Thank you. I do have a question for you, though. If my recollection of the New England Collegiate Cross Country Schedule is correct, there is a major event the preceding day at Franklin Park.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if that's got any operational impacts on the half marathon? If you're gonna be setting up later than typical, or plans are gonna be altered in any way?
We actually cooperate with Irwin Cohen, who heads up the New England Cross Country Championship, and so with that cooperation, we do a little bit of our finish line setup inside White Stadium in the morning, but we've asked to set up some of our other larger tents for the food and some of our gear check around the area, but not to impact their cross-country meet. And so, we actually do support them with some of the portable toilets, and we share some of that, and it's just kind of a cooperation that we've been doing for several years now.
Any other questions or comments? I will move that we grant the request for special use permit in connection with the annual B A A Half Marathon to be held on Sunday, October 8th. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay. We have a couple of vacancies to fill. First is in the Building Department, two senior maintenance crafts, H V A C vacancies. Mr. Simmons?
Yes, I was looking to replace two persons that had left the employment of the Building Department. These persons are H V A C technicians. They were added to the budget within the last couple of years to offset using outside contractors. Their short time was actually very, very successful, although they didn't work out, and we actually had a pretty good summer, because I had staff in town that could respond a lot faster than calling these contractors up. So, I'd like permission to try again, and advertise, and see what we can get for help in that scenario.
Okay. And I see you're going to be posting the position widely to try to attract the broadest possible pool?
Yes.
Any questions about this? Selectmen Green?
I'm sorry. Go. I have a list of employment numbers for the town. I see that the Building Department is relatively non-diverse, so I would hope that you use this as an opportunity to really aggressively make sure that the pool of applicants is diverse as possible.
Absolutely.
In selecting the best one from that pool, of course.
Yes, sir.
For the position.
Absolutely, we will, yes.
Okay.
So, this isn't a civil service position?
No.
Oh, good.
Okay. I'll move that we authorize the filling of two senior maintenance crafts, H V A C vacancies, within the Building Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. And now, we have the Police Department, 10 vacancies. Commissioner, Commissioner, Chief O'Leary.
Good evening.
I just changed your title.
That's okay.
Don't give him our title.
He can have it.
At least he gets a badge.
See that?
Chief.
I'm here tonight to request authorization to fill 10 vacancies. There's a story behind the number 10. We actually have more vacancies right now. We have 16 vacancies in patrol officer positions, but the list just became certified on Monday, and we had to take a look to see -- we didn't want to take on that large of a class with all of our field training officers, and the training that we put them through, not only in the academy, but also back at the police station. So, we broke it up. We're asking permission to hire 10 right now. We have 10 slots available to us at the end of January in the Plymouth Police Academy, and they'll come out on the street sometime in the month of June, when they'll enter our Field Training Officer Program. And we think that 10 is a good number to work with, as they cut their teeth, more or less, in policing. We also have planned, and we've put in play, at least six more seats for the Lowell Academy, which will start at either the end of May or the beginning of June of this year, so I will be back to see if we can get up to full complement. So, but right now, we'd just like to fill the 10. And we, like I said, the list got certified on Monday.
Okay. And this was the list that you guys did a lot of outreach.
Yes. We did a lot of outreach for it. We did that video, where National Amusement did it for us, and we do have what we believe is a pretty diverse group of people to choose from.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
How many female applicants are in that pool?
You know, I just saw the list today of the people that passed. We had, I think, 10 females sign up, 10 women sign up. I don't know how many actually passed. All we get notified of is the people that pass, and I think we have that list, and I didn't peruse it that closely. They'll be coming in to sign up. They have until the 19th, if you approve it, to do their sign up. And I'll know more after that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll move that we authorize the filling of 10 vacancies within the Police Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brookline Day. Lisa Parides, tell us about what's become a real nice yearly event.
Good evening, Lisa Parides, Recreation Director. Happy to be here to talk briefly tonight about the Sixth Annual Brookline Day Celebration that will be happening on September -- Sunday, September 24th. The main event will be held from 11:00 to 3:00 at Lars Anderson Park. We will kick off the day that morning with a 5K road race at 8:30 P.M. -- 8:30 A.M., and a kids' fun run at 8:00 A.M. As we've had in the past six years, we have live music, some great bands we have scheduled this year, great food, local vendors, and businesses from Brookline, nonprofits, and also our ever-popular Touch a Truck area in the outskirts, as well as the other popular area, which is our mini Town Hall. So, it's a great time. We also have introduced last year, so this'll be our second year, of having the kickoff to Brookline Together, which is an initiative that we started last year to commit to some new efforts in community engagement, volunteerism, and understanding what happens in Brookline. So, we have our Brookline ambassadors, Brookline Together ambassadors, who will be roaming about at Brookline Day, helping us out with that effort.
Yeah, I always look forward to Brookline Day. It's been a lot of fun. Selectmen Green?
Yeah, I love Brookline Day. My question, though, is are we gonna have that water cart we had last time? And do we have our own water cart that we could bring to events like this and other events?
We do have -- we will have the water cart, and we do not yet have our own water cart. It is in discussion with the D P W in conjunction with our other events.
We miss this summer.
Yes, yes, I know, I know, I agree. Yep.
Any other?
Sounds like a lot of fun. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be away as a result of Jewish holidays, but I'm gonna be with you in spirit, because I do -- I really do enjoy this day, so I'll be thinking about you.
Thank you, we'll miss you.
How many groups are signed up to participate this year?
In terms of vendors, for the -- in our profit and nonprofit business, we have space for 120 vendors, and we have a little bit of a wait list right now, so.
Wow.
Yeah, so we sell out pretty quickly, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
For the first time, I think, ever last year, we had some bad weather on Brookline Day, or in the days leading up to Brookline Day, and there was some reconfiguration, I think, of the field that was required. As the Selectmen's representative on the Disability Commission, there was some concern about the location or the availability of handicap parking. So, I think this is something that you've heard before, and that there's been some conversation about, but just sort of echoing what I heard at the most recent-- some conversation about. But just sort of echoing what I heard at the most recent commission meeting, I think there's some desire to make sure that there's some availability of handicap spaces should people with vans come.
Oh, yes, absolutely. And we actually do have that. We had a little bit of rain in the morning during the road race, but it cleared up in time. We are very lucky to have had six years of great weather. So I've never said that on camera, though. It happens. But we do have dedicated, we have at least 12 dedicated handicap spaces in the parking lot. But you're right, because the trucks weren't able to park in the fields, we had to do some alternate configuration. So we are on top of that this year. I appreciate you mentioning that.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have passed this for you, and I will give them to Austin on my way out.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We have some board and commission interviews tonight. And first up is Mr. Zurov, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleasure to see you on that side. I have to say that I remember the first time I came before the board, and I don't think any of you were there. I guess I've been serving for a long time.
So how long has it been?
I think this is the beginning of my 10th year.
Yeah, definitely.
This is my fourth reappointment, I think.
Wow. So what are some of the challenges that you've seen?
Well, we had a very easy year. We had about, what, 10 40Bs? I'm hopeful that we've, in our gaining experience in dealing with them, that they're getting easier for us to deal with. But they're always a challenge, and keeping the balance between the neighborhoods and the developers is always a challenge. But it's something that we, I know I enjoy doing, and I know the board remains enthusiastic, sometimes surprisingly so. But we continue to do our job.
Yeah. The public should know that because of the onslaught of 40Bs, we were able to make a case to the Department of Housing and Community Development for some workload relief for the ZBA. But you guys have really been under the gun. I'm just in awe of the amount of time that you've had to spend on all these 40Bs.
A lot of meetings.
Yeah, it was getting to the point where we were having trouble getting rooms.
Unfortunately, that window, which is now closed, is probably going to open again at some point.
Right. So for everyone out there, right now, because the ZBA approved in this calendar year 160-ish units of 40B housing, we were able to qualify for a one-year safe harbor from 40Bs. What that gives us the ability to do during that year is to say no if it's a project we don't like or the ZBA doesn't like. But that year is going to expire on March 23rd.
Sooner than we'd like.
Yeah, that's the magic date.
Don't publicize that date too widely.
Well, I think the developer community is very well aware of that date, and I think the community should be aware of it, too. Because I think potentially, I know of at least two big 40B projects that are kind of waiting in the wings for March 23rd to come around and be filed, and Lord knows what else will come up that we're not aware of. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Zurov?
I have a question for Mr. Zurov. So a non-40B question at that. You spend a lot of time with the zoning bylaw in interpreting it. And one of the things that members of this board have said in the past is the zoning bylaw is a confusing document that we periodically, seemingly every town meeting, go in and amend a table or strike a definition or maybe add a new article.
Usually it's adding.
I'm wondering what your impression of the overall document is. Do you think it's confusing? Do you think it's self-contradicting? Do you think that we need to go in and clean up the zoning bylaw at some point in the near future?
That's not an easy question to answer. But I would say this, and I've been before other zoning boards, I think our code is pretty good. There are a number of residual conflicts in language that could be addressed but don't actually rise to the level of requiring a warrant article, per se. In the ideal situation, we would be able to come before some board, maybe you, and reform some of the language in there to avoid some of the confusions that give rise to conflicts. Mike Yanovich is very aware of those languages, and occasionally they come up in hearings, and we're in that situation where we say, well, was this the intent of the writers, or is this the intent of the current situation? Overall, I'd say the code is in pretty good shape. It holds its own against, say, Newton or some of the other neighboring towns. But like everything else, it becomes outmoded as development changes. And there are some situations, like with these new big homes, we just passed an article, I guess, that gives rise to confusion. And it can always be improved. But the question is always, what's the best way to do it? And I don't know the answer to that.
Do you see any trends in cases that are coming before the ZBA that we should be aware of and take 40B out of the equation? We know about those.
Are there trends? No. We have an historical town with many older structures. We're seeing a general repurposing of a lot of these homes and structures, and that's where the flexibility comes. That's why we sit as a board, to hear cases where the code just doesn't fit right as it stands, and people are looking for exceptions and some relief. That's the whole purpose of the process, is to allow some elasticity in the interpretation. And that's the challenge of what we do. So as I said, I find that interesting. And if I may digress, I recall when I first came before this board, I had no zoning experience. I was just a practicing real estate attorney. I've learned by practice, and it's been an interesting experience. But overall, I'd say that the code is in pretty good shape.
I have no questions.
Any other?
Sure.
So you have experience in Newton. I know that they have an onslaught of 40Bs as well. Have you seen anything that we could perhaps learn or impart on Newton?
I just went to a meeting with the chairman of their zoning committee. They're undergoing a major overhaul of their process and reconstituting their entire government, as a matter of fact, so that they no longer have a Board of Aldermen, they have something else. Newton's position has been no on everything. So I feel much, much more comfortable knowing that in Brookline, we do allow certain things, and we're flexible in terms of our process. It's more efficient than their process. But their code, I think, is being rewritten now, or they're at least considering a rewrite of the entire code. So to compare the two is difficult. They're in a different place than we are.
Well, actually, Selectman Hamilton's question raised one in my mind, and could you talk about changes you might, or you would like to see in our code or in the procedures of the Zoning Board of Appeals that would make cases perhaps easier to complete, perhaps make neighborhoods and neighbors happier with the end result, maybe not developers, but unless they get what they want, maybe they will never be happy. But you know what I'm saying. Are there things you could do to strengthen your processes so that especially 40Bs are not so painful?
That's a difficult question for me to answer. What I will say is on the 40As, I think that the process works very well. We take the recommendations of the Planning Board quite seriously, and I know that they spend a great deal of time vetting these projects and going through them, not only from a code standpoint, but from a design standpoint. In our process, we take the input of the neighbors very seriously. And just recently, I sent one petitioner home and said, come back after you talk to your neighbors, because there was a lot of neighborhood opposition. So we deferred rather than to make a decision, trying to reach an equitable result. So I think our process works fairly well. I don't go to the Planning Board meetings, but I do listen very carefully to their recommendations. And I think our Building Department is extremely thorough in not only making recommendations, but interpreting the code for us when there are questions. So I think our process is pretty good. Do I think that there could be improvements? I think basically the improvements come from improving the code where there are conflicts in language and so forth. And I wish there were a better process for resolving those conflicts, but that's a legislative process.
Yeah, two-thirds of town meeting.
Yeah. And it makes it very difficult. And as I said, there are so many little points that could be made better, but how do you get them all in one bundle and get them passed through town meeting? I don't know.
Yeah, we actually, I think, we have in the CIP in another year or two, a review of the zoning bylaw. And there's money in the CIP for consultant dollars to help us with that. Because I think, I think generally, my impression is we need to take a good, hard look at the zoning bylaw. And in some respects, I kind of compare it to the Internal Revenue Code, reading that. It's very confusing.
The more refined you get, the more difficult it becomes to read it and make sense of it.
I mean, I think the other issue is we want to make sure that what the zoning bylaw says is what this community wants it to say. So there's an issue of, is it confusing? Is it self-contradictory? But the larger issue is, does it say what, does it allow the projects that we want to proceed and not allow the projects that we don't want to proceed? And I think it's healthy to go in every once in a while and do a top-to-bottom review and take a step back and say, what are the policy goals that sits behind these words?
I might add that the courts sometimes have an adverse effect to what we may want.
Right. And sometimes even the Attorney General, after, I think there was one situation where after town meeting passed the warrant art, I think it was the original amendment to the zoning bylaw on attics and basements, where the Attorney General crossed out the word "not," changing the whole intent of that section.
But we're persistent. We came back two more times and tried to fix the same problem.
Including most recently, with very complex scheme that you guys need to interpret with the help from the Building Department.
Right, more often than not, unfortunately.
Yeah.
What have you learned in your nine-plus years, and what have been the biggest surprises?
I mean, it would be an understatement to say the 40B was a big surprise, since I sat for probably two terms without having one. And then all of a sudden, we were confronted with one, and we really didn't know what to do with it, but we managed. And I know you're all aware of which one I'm talking about.
Yeah.
But what have I learned? I've learned the mechanics of the zoning approval process in this town, and it's interesting. And having worked for and been a developer before, I find it's been very interesting to see how the process develops and to see, sitting on that side of the table, actually being a quasi-judge and making decisions that affect people's lives, is interesting and exciting in some ways. So I'm still here after all these years, and that's because I want to be, not because I have to be.
You're not doing it for the pay?
No. That's an ongoing joke, Neil.
Same up here.
I'm sure.
Any other questions of Mr. Zurov? Okay, so I'm sure we'll be, I don't think we're voting tonight, but in the very near future.
Well, I'm sitting in two days, so hopefully.
Well, you'll continue to sit.
Thank you very much for your time.
Sure, thank you. Okay, Planning Board, Catherine Link, come on up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about serving on the Planning Board. My name is Catherine Link, and I served on the Park and Recreation Board a while ago, so I remember that interview process. But like the earlier gentleman said, everybody's changed over. So I'm not quite sure how you want to proceed, if you want me to say a few things, or you just want to ask questions.
Sure, why don't you say a few things on what attracts you to the Planning Board, and your approach and philosophy, and whatever else you want to talk to, talk about.
All right. So I want to serve on the Planning Board, I mean, first and foremost, because I love Brookline. I've been living here since 1995. I've raised two children here and served on the Park and Recreation Commission, been active as a soccer coach for one daughter. My other daughter was more into theater, so I served on the Art Barn Board. And I think I've just found ways to be active in my community as a good neighbor. But now I'm seeking to be more fully engaged and back on a board. I think what I would bring to it is my experience both as a real estate development lawyer. I worked at Goodwin, formerly Goodwin Procter, in the real estate development group, and worked on large commercial projects, but also affordable housing projects. And I shared with you my resume, saying some of the favorite projects that I worked on in the affordable housing realm. Then I went on to university administration. I'm probably one of the only people who has an undergraduate said, what I really want to be someday is a university administrator. But that's really what I thought. And I've worked at Harvard University, Tufts University, and I've also had an independent consultancy and worked for a variety of schools, universities, colleges, and even a university in Italy. And that experience of managing budgets, having chief operating officer kind of roles, executive roles, working as the lead client on campus projects and buildings, in particular, science buildings, has afforded me the opportunity to have this really broad experience and knowledge about how do you bring together a diverse set of experts in the design fields, diverse stakeholders, people from surrounding towns, students, administrators, faculty. How do you bring them together and arrive at a physical space and an administrative structure, which is just as important, the hardscape and the softscape, to create a community that is driving toward its goals and achieving its mission? So I think that what I would bring to the board, when I go to board meetings in the town of Brookline, I mean, I'm always really impressed by the professionalism and the expertise on the board, and the Planning Board is no exception. I mean, it's really an exceptional group of people. I think what I would bring to it is that client perspective. I'm not a design professional, but I've worked with them throughout my career in the law and in university administration. And I have the unique perspective of having to live with the building after the architects and the engineers leave, and really understanding, wait, what are the operating issues going to be with this structure or this campus? How are people really going to use this space? And you're always surprised. And you're always surprised. So is it flexible to handle that surprise? And I'm happy to share examples with you, but I think that's what I would love to bring to the planning board and to the town.
This is a board with a big time commitment.
I know, lots of homework. Well, I am, I've always been a really hard worker. I'm from a small town in Wisconsin. And as I tell my children almost every day, you know, I've really, I've worked my entire life, you know. I say, always say, "I went to graduate school through the miracle of waitressing." And, you know, and even in my, in my roles in big executive roles, a question that I've always asked every single job applicant that I've interviewed is, "What's the first job you ever had, and what did you learn from it?" And really, if people say to me, "Well, McKinsey Consulting when I was thirty," I'm like, "Hmm, I'm not sure you're going to do windows." And like, every job requires doing windows. And I really understand that the planning board, I mean, these guys have to do their homework. They have to, you know, look at plans and be able to look at the two dimensions and think about what the three dimensions are. I think the planning board is fascinating because there's all these inputs, like, what is the traffic, what do our transportation board, what do they think? What is park and recreation? What's their input? How does this figure in how people are thinking about the schools? How are people thinking about people with disabilities or our growing population and our aging population? I mean, all those things have to come together. And there's just a lot of hard work. You've got to read the stuff, and you have to add up the numbers, and you have to bring a lot of constructive criticism, which means a lot of preparation ahead of time, so that you don't get completely wowed by the developer's, you know, beautiful presentation, and you say, "Well, wait a second, you know, how wide is that alleyway? Or how many trees do you have? Or, you know, couldn't you live with the setback? Why do you need, you know, something else there?" So I think, you know, I've always worked a full-time job, I've raised two kids, I took care of my in-laws until they died. I just can do it.
Okay. Yeah, the planning board meets at least once a week, sometimes twice, and then sometimes they're pulled into other committees, and it's a big commitment. But on the other hand, it's a board where you can have a real impact on the direction of the town and projects that are going on around town. I know this board really relies on the expertise of planning board members as we staff committees. I know of at least, well, one committee that I'm heading up has a, is co, we always seek out a planning board member. That's the Coolidge Corner Study Committee, where we're looking at the Waldo Durgan parcel and Holiday Inn. And we have one current planning board member, two ex-planning board members, and maybe I'm missing some. It's a big committee. Anyone have any questions?
Sure.
Yeah, I was intrigued by your sort of tease of us and say that you could give us examples of surprises that come up. But I would like an example or two of surprises that you've encountered in the academic setting that gives you some insight into the types of surprises that would arise in our setting.
Sure. So I'll give you an example of when I was working at Harvard University, and I was the founding executive director for Harvard's stem cell and regenerative biology department. It was the first department at Harvard, and still the only one, that's both in the medical school and the School of the Faculty of Arts and Sciences, which have two wildly different cultures. And I think Mr. Franco might be familiar with this.
Too familiar.
And originally, this department was supposed to go to the new Alston campus, and then the financial crisis hit. And I had to take, I had to lead a group of people who were really fired up about going to Alston and say, "Actually, we're going to renovate an existing building." And bringing everybody along to an end product that I think in the end was better, and I think what I learned from that is sometimes Plan B is the better plan. And for that department, that renovated building, which ended up being lead platinum, and at the time, I don't know if this is still true, but at the time had the highest research density of any life sciences building in the United States, which is to say, we use space more efficiently there than in any other life science building. Science buildings are energy hogs, and they're space hogs, and you really have to really ride your budget and really ride, you have to always be thinking about, "How is this going to work? How's it going to operate?" Because you can build a beautiful thing, and then you can't afford to run it. And working with the community there and trying to understand what scientists and students and postdoctoral fellows wanted, but then also what university leadership needed. I mean, they need those numbers to come in, right? We really focused on flexibility, and some of the things that I learned there was that if you want to have a diverse and inclusive science community, which is often woefully short of women participating, sometimes a small thing can make a big difference. So we made a move to have all of the science furniture be adjustable, because stationary science furniture is built for the average height of a man. And when you have a lot of women and you have a lot of people from all over the world, maybe some with smaller stature, they can't work at these benches effectively if they're five-three. And so we just, once we realized that, and we bought all modular, height-adjustable furniture, it was less expensive, because actually architects kind of love fixed things, because they can be more beautiful and expensive, but the modular stuff is more economical oftentimes. But it also sent this huge message to the community that, like, we're not just talking about this being a place for all kinds of scientists, we're building a place that's for all kinds of scientists. And I think that was just this great way of living, the idea of how does physical space shape a community.
So one takeaway is always have a very good Plan B.
Yeah, you gotta always, like, I always say to people, you have to always have a plan, but you also have to be always ready to change your plan. Because you can get in that piece of information that says, "Whoa, the water table is way higher than we thought it was." Or, you know, and sometimes you can be doing good things, and you can have unintended consequences. So again, in a different science building, we were using water so efficiently with our toilets and our drains and everything, that we didn't, we had to, we ended up realizing later in the game, we had to recalculate, you know, there's a certain amount of science waste that you can just pour down the drain, as long as it's diluted to a certain extent. But if you're being super efficient with your water, you've just changed the dilution, and now you've got a problem with Boston or Cambridge water, right? So then you've got to say, "Whoa, we were like, how do we do that? Do we, how do we add in more water?" Whatever, you know, you have to come up with a solution. But again, you have to have a great plan, but you've got to be flexible and change your plan when you get new and better information.
It's funny, the doing windows analogy in the planning board world perhaps is the day-to-day expansion of a home or building a home, or, you know, a single-family house, small projects. And I suspect a fair amount of the workload is that. And then another piece of the workload is big projects, and then another piece is planning. And I think the planning board, the planning piece of the planning board has, in years past, kind of fell by the wayside, and I think there's been a move to get the planning board more into planning and actually have input in, more effective and constructive input into things like the town's capital improvement program, whereas officially, the planning board is the body that proposes it. But it's, in years past, it's kind of been a pro forma exercise, and there's been a move to make their input more meaningful. I know Sergio Mediglioni, who, no longer on the planning board, was pushing in that direction. So that's just a comment. Have you spoken to anyone on the planning board, just to get a sense of the workload and how much?
Well, I mean, I've attended meetings and, you know, spent a lot of time on the website looking at the materials and so forth, and just thinking, "Okay, these guys reviewed all this material," or, you know. So it's a lot. I mean, the parks recreation could be time-consuming, but, and you had to do your homework, and you had to do site visits, and, you know, some people think you just go to that one meeting, but then there are, you know, design reviews for specific parks or specific green spaces. And so I'm not unfamiliar with that. And there's sort of a similar process on university campuses. I mean, if you're going to alter something, there's a lot of meetings. And you have to be open to how many meetings does the community need? I mean, you can't just come in and, I mean, you guys know this, right? You don't, you don't just come in and say, "Come hell or high water, we're voting tonight." Like, sometimes you have to take a step back and gather more information or do more listening in order to get at the right moment to make a decision.
Okay. Amy?
I'm intrigued by your resume, which has you having many different kind of hats and professional obligations. Seems like you went from a teacher to being a university administrator, to being a lawyer, to maybe back to university administration. Have I sort of got that sequence correct?
More or less, yes.
And I'm just, I'm curious as to why you, you know, you felt the need to change as frequently as you have.
Well, I think part of it is being, you know, frankly, part of it is being a woman and a mother, and timing those different parts of your life. And part of it, I think that there is this overarching theme of being very interested in educational institutions and how they're embedded in cities and towns. So I actually went to law school, I mean, I taught it, I got a master's in teaching English as a second language, and taught and so forth. And then I went to law school because I thought I wanted to do something in education, in the realm of higher education. And then when I went to a law firm, which is really, really wonderful experience, and I wanted to have that experience of working in a large law firm, but I specifically chose real estate, because if you think about what do higher educations do, they manage people and they manage property. And so I knew that if I was an expert on real estate, that I would be attractive someday in higher education. So it might look like I did a lot of different things, and part of it is just, you know, I have a lot of curiosity, and I think having all that experience sort of enriches my worldview and gives me sort of a, an appreciation of other people's worldviews, and, you know, I haven't just done that straight path.
Okay, I think we need to move on.
Sure.
So thank you very much. We have, I believe, one vacancy on planning, and we have at least a couple folks applying, so we'll see how it goes.
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And next up is Carlos Redru-
Redrujo.
Redrujo, okay. Tell us about yourself.
Okay, my name is Carlos Redrujo. I've been living in Brookline for the last twelve years. This year is very exciting for me, because my son, who's five and a half, is starting kindergarten at Runcle. So he just started, today's his third day, and still surviving it. I live on the Fisher Hill area, and I am a self-employed, or have my own practice as an architect and graphic design business. Not sure what else.
So I guess the first big question for the planning board is, this is a, this is a big commitment. So how can you, can you do that?
Well, I believe so. I mean, I've attended a few of the planning board meetings, and I've followed some of the process of the, a few of the projects. I've actually talked to Polly for different instances, a fair amount, emailed her back and forth. And there's something really fascinating about the architectural or the planning process of either a small house or a larger project, and how it can impact the neighborhood or even the town itself as it goes. As a self-employed architect, my schedule is very flexible, so I can sort of, I work at home, so I can schedule things throughout the day and even into the night. But I think what sort of draws me into the planning board is, Brookline is a wonderful town. I used to live in the Back Bay and then in Cambridge, and then we settled for Brookline. I lived at the Brook House for seven years, and then we bought a house at Fisher Hill. And Brookline is an amazing town. It's, the moment you drive into Brookline, you notice it. The lights are dimmer at night, there's a lot more trees, it just feels a lot different. There's a, not every street has a curb, not every street has double sidewalk. It just has a feeling, and especially if you go down to South Brookline, has a feeling that Cambridge doesn't have, Newton doesn't have, Boston definitely doesn't have. And it's, but that's changing at the fastest pace, I think, that we would like. And it's also under a lot of pressure, especially because of what's happening in Boston with all the high-tech companies coming into the metropolitan Boston area. There's a lot of pressure from Boston and Cambridge and other areas to grow and evolve, maybe in a way that it would slowly change its character. I think what happens a lot of times is that you have a, you make little changes every so often, and then suddenly you look back ten years, and you realize that the whole character or whatever you've changed has changed so dramatically that it's not even recognizable. So I think the planning board can look at how those changes happen, it can feel the, it can sort of exert pressure back against the pressure that the town is receiving. And we can make sure that when a project, say for example, a larger project is proposed, that the streetscape, the way the pedestrian, the way the pedestrian feels, how it hits the, how the building hits the sidewalk, how the pedestrian feels as it's walking along the sidewalk, the kind of use, if it's mixed use, or if it's, if there's businesses in it, if there are neighborhood-making businesses, rather than, unfortunately, old banks that tend to be sort of, in some areas of the town, a big problem. I know we don't have control over exactly what goes in there, but if it, but I think through design and through good design, you can make that those changes be the right environment for the town itself. I know also that there is, there's a lot of talk about density, you know, what is, you know, what kind of density is good, or is density good at all? I believe that what we should talk about is actually smart density. Some parts can handle a lot more density, not height necessarily, but sort of higher density. Some parts can't handle any more density. An example of this, for example, is the Fenway down in the Boston area. We've seen in the last ten years, that area changed from parking garages and parking lots to six- and eight-story buildings with much higher density. That area seems like it can handle that increase in density, it still feels like, you know, now it feels like a city, but the streets are wide enough, there's enough sort of movement. And then there's, it just, it can handle it better than, for example, Coolidge Corner or other parts where just the physical environment would have, sort of dictates how, what the density could be. And I think, I don't know if you have any questions? could be. And I think, if you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
So, you've got your own firm?
Yes.
I see in your selected projects, you've done at least one project in Brookline.
Yes.
Walk me through how you would navigate having a firm continuing to make a living and serving on the planning board. How, what would you, would you recuse yourself from any work in Brookline? Would you abstain from votes? What, what would be your plan?
Um, yes, I would, primarily, I would recuse myself, well, I would look for work outside of Brookline, because that is, I think, the, the most clear, clean way of sort of not being in the way, or not feeling that any, any favoritism or anything is happening. Otherwise, I would recuse myself. But I also, you know, one of my mantras for my clients, and, is that if you, you know, you try to do everything within the bylaws, the zoning bylaws, so that the project goes smoothly, and is, sort of goes ahead without having to go into the different meetings that they require. I know that's different from the planning board. But yes, my, my first thought would be to not look for projects in Brookline.
Any other?
I think that's probably the wisest course.
Yeah.
It's difficult to make those kinds of decisions.
As a parent of a child under a certain age, is there anything that you're looking for that we don't already have in Brookline, like, over the next 20 years, what we could incorporate in?
Well, we, we actually, in Brookline, we're actually very lucky. I think we have a lot of things that other towns don't have. I think we want to make sure that we don't lose those things that we, we do have. I think the, the vibrancy of the urban commercial spaces, which are still a small town, both in physically, and, and sort of the way it works, environments, versus the more residential areas, where you have almost suburban, suburban qualities. I mean, what I, what I think is interesting about Brookline is, and the reason why we settled, actually, in Brookline, is because I wanted to be within the, the Green Line, and for me, anything past Brookline was way too suburban. But, but Brookline still has, as I mentioned before, that character that is sort of very green, very sort of undeveloped kind of neighborhoods. And I'm thinking a lot of, except for the, the very center of Coolidge Corner, but sort of around the whole north, north of Brookline. You walk around the different neighborhoods, and they all feel a lot less, they all feel very different from, for example, Cambridge, where it just feels, Cambridge as a city, every time they do a project, they want to do it so perfectly, that it becomes almost too perfect. You know, they, if they're rebuilding, rebuilding a street, or they're changing the LED lights, you know, they go through all these processes that I think complicate the, the end result on how it looks. It sort of becomes, it loses sort of the innocence that sort of Brookline has, in a way. Not sure if that comes through the way it should, but it's, I think, we, we have to continue to maintain the, the open spaces that we have, the parks, the wonderful parks that we have. Now, I'm on the CRC for, sorry, Design Review Committee, the DRC for the Brookline Reservoir Park, that is just going to start right now. And the commentary there is the same thing. It's like, how do you upgrade the, the park to handicap accessibility, and to all the modern requirements that a park needs, without changing the character that it has? How do you go almost invisibly? So, planning-wise, you know, how do you upgrade, for example, Route 9, the Route 9 corridor, which is sort of the gateways into Brookline and Boston, with better buildings that address sort of the, the needs of the neighborhood, and also the, the reality that it's a very intense traffic street, but with activity that happens at the, at the sidewalk level, so that you don't kill the pedestrian life, and you sort of reactivate it. So, it's sort of keeping, for a long answer to your question, is, it's keeping what we have alive, and making sure that it doesn't change dramatically.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we need to move on. So, thank you very much for applying. I think we have one empty slot, so we'll see how it goes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Human Resources Board, Mr. D'Angelo, welcome. You've been the Chair of the Board. What are the, some of the challenges you see in-
Well, first, thank you for meeting with me, as I'm seeking appointment. I think this, reappointment, I think this would be my fifth term, and I've-
You're real glutton.
Yes. So, I actually enjoy it. I'd say the challenges, and the opportunities really have been to address the changing nature of the workforce. I think that's one, and really one of the most interesting things that we've done, is that we've, a, a big part of what we've done over the past couple of years has been to reclassify positions. And it's been interesting to me to see, you know, the nature of, of how the nature of government employment changes. You know, you're moving from positions like clerk administrator, into more varied responsibilities. The impact of IT in the, in the workforce has been significant, and it's been really interesting to see how the managers of the departments have tried to reshape their departments to accommodate technology, to, I think, really to provide more varied, and responsible, and challenging positions. So, that's been the big opportunity for us over the last few years. We've, you know, we continue to hear grievances, which continue to present themselves on a regular basis. I think we had about eight over the last years, I counted. We, and we, you know, we deal with them on a case-by-case basis. We listen to both sides, and try and reach a fair, a fair disposition. We've also been developing and revising policies, employment policies, and, you know, we continue to do that. That's an ongoing effort. We've, and again, interesting, you know, we've addressed things like social media, workforce, again, interesting, the way technology is impacting on how government services are delivered, and also developing, you know, sort of policies that are really required in any workforce, like a discrimination, or anti-arrestment policy.
Okay.
Yep. It's my understanding, looking at numbers, and just looking around, that the town has been a little more successful in the last few years, in increasing the diversity of its workforce, than maybe in previous years. If that is the case, what role did or should the Human Relations Board play?
Human Resources.
Human Resources.
Human Resources, those HR boards.
So, we have, we have met and worked collaboratively with the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and have, and have had input into their overall diversity policy. We don't directly get involved in recruiting. I think that we've, what we do, what I hope we do, is create a workforce that, or help to foster a workforce that's welcoming, and that's fair, and that's, you know, open to, to employees. And so, I hope in that way, it, it creates diversity, and fosters a climate of diversity.
Talk to Franco.
So, we've seen over the past few years, some ballot initiatives, and legislative proposals to tinker with what the minimum wage is, to try and get paid sick days for, for some people. I'm wondering if there's anything that the town should be doing to make implementation of an initiative through the ballot easier, or to get out in front of these types of, of efforts?
So, I think we have, in response to recent legislation about sick leave, we've, we've reviewed our policies to see if it's in conformance with that. I think, you know, as a, as an employer, we're an enlightened employer in terms of worker protections, and so a lot of these things, we're sort of ahead of that. You know, also the town initiative of the, of the living wage, we've implemented. So, I don't know that there's a major gap right now that I could identify. I think that it's really implementation, you know, implementing hiring processes that are fair and welcoming. I think, you know, we've tried to do that in the non-civil service areas, and where, you know, recruiting can be done, can be done in a different way. And I think that, so I guess the answer is, no, I don't have a, I don't have a gap that I've identified. I think we're pretty good as an employer.
I'm curious about, you've been there a number of years, and I'm curious, a number of years ago in town meeting, we, we voted to abolish our, or take our employees out of civil service, at least the AFSMI, and not, the non-safety personnel.
Yes.
Whether it's fire and police are still there, but others are not. And I'm wondering whether that has had an impact, as you were talking about before, non-civil service cases, and whether that's had an impact on the amount of work of the Human Resources Board, whether you're hearing more grievances, whether you're dealing with more issues?
No, I don't think it's affected the level of grievances. I mean, we did, we were actually a, you know, moving force in, in doing that, in that change. And I think that we thought that change would, for one thing, make the hiring process more efficient in the non-public safety area. The civil service process was very mechanical, and not, there weren't tests being given. A lot of the classifications were outdated. So, I think that, I don't think it's, the elimination of civil service requirements in the non-public safety area has certainly not created more grievances. It didn't take protections away from people. They had, well, it didn't take significant protections away from people. They already had protections from their collective bargaining agreement, or from town policies. I think it has enabled some of the reclassification, and some, and ability to be more fluid, and more, you're more responsive about job titles, because you're not tied to civil service titles. So, it's been able, it's enabled managers in those areas to remake their, their workforce, to reflect, you know, efficient and creative allocations of responsibility. So, I think in that sense, yes, it's, it's enabled work, but I think that's been positive.
Thank you.
I think, I think-
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. And thank you for serving, and wanting to re-up.
Yes, and I thank you on behalf of my colleagues on the board, including Dana Teague, who'll be here in a second, for giving us the opportunity.
Yeah. I'm going to take Ms. Teague, and then, I'm going to ask forbearance from the folks who are here for the override study committee, to let the folks on warrant article 20 come before you, to move around the, the agenda, because I promised them that I would try to get to them before nine o'clock, and we're kind of getting there, so we're running a little late. I, I find doing the interviews very interesting, and they tend to run long, so I apologize. So, please bear with us. Ms. Teague, you're re-upping two.
Yes, it's my first re-up. This is three years I've been on the board.
So, have you found that experience?
It's been a great opportunity for knowledge transfer for me. I've worked in HR. I worked for Eversource, used to be N-Star. I have my certification in HR, and I work with the union, and with labor relations on a daily basis.
And how have you found the experience? Are there things that we can be doing better? Changes that we ought to be making?
I think it's remarkable how few grievances we have. I think it's really a tribute to the great relationship we have between management and the unionized employees. I think there's conversations that are going on on a daily basis, that preclude having it go to a grievance.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
How did we get you in the first place?
I really wanted to do something to give back to the town. I've lived here since 1985. My daughter went through school here, went through Lincoln, and Brookline High. And I felt like it was something that I really wanted to give back to my community.
And how did you find out about the Human Resources Board specifically?
Go back and see.
I know, that's why I checked.
On the webpage.
Oh, okay.
On the webpage.
Can I ask the same question I asked of the previous speaker, and that is, in what role do you see the Human Resources Board playing in increasing diversity of our workforce? What, what role has it played, and what role can it play, in your view?
Well, as Ed said, we have met with the other committee.
But you, you've worked on policies, and with respect to policies, is there anything particular there that you could tell us about?
Well, again, we've met with Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I'm on the Diversity Committee at, at Eversource, so I think there's a lot of back and forth on that. And again, the policies are a big piece, because that's a big part where the conversation takes place, and gets things moving. And the Human Resources Board really supports the Human Resources Department in any way that we can, and we are such a diverse group ourselves, with education background, public utility. I think, as a group, we bring new ideas and new ways to look at things.
Okay. I think, I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was an easy one. Okay. So, I'm going to take Article 20 out of order, and I'll just, this is, you can present Article 20, and then we have a public, this is a public hearing. I'll encourage you to rehearse for town meeting, and try to, if possible, stick to the town meeting time limits, but I won't enforce that.
Well, um-
I'll just encourage that.
Okay.
I'll encourage that.
Okay. So, I'm Kaya Van Der Seel. I'm a town meeting member from precinct 15.
Sorry.
And I am one of the petitioners on this warrant article. Unfortunately, I am the only one who can attend this evening. Tricia Connors is ill, Raquel Halsey needs to work, and Vishni Samarowira has school tomorrow, and can't really be here this late. There are some other people who would like to give some information, and Vishni has sent a statement that someone will read for her, in addition to giving some more information. So, I don't know if you've read it, but there are a bunch of whereas clauses that talk about the reasons why we're bringing this warrant article. And then, the resolved actually calls on the Board of Selectmen to do some things, establishing the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and asking them, asking you, to appoint an Indigenous Peoples' Day Celebration Committee, much as we have the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee, and to have a commemoration that fits with this. Also, calling on the schools, I don't want to read the whole thing, because that would take the whole time, but calling on the schools to observe the day, and have the appropriate instruction. And actually, this sort of thing that-
And actually, this sort of thing that we're asking the schools to do is something that Vishni has been working on in the high school and hopes to work on history curriculum for the elementary schools at some point. Also asking to help find funding, we're not asking you to fund it, but help us find funding, or whoever's on the committee. And then it lists a number of people who should be informed of this, and we also talk about potential, composition of the Celebration Committee. I don't know if you want any more information than that. You know, I was going to talk a little bit about why I'm interested in having this warrant article passed. I was not always very well-versed in history. It was not considered that important. We were scientists in our family, and if you weren't a scientist, watch out. So I strayed by becoming a doctor, and that's as far as I was allowed to go.
And doctors and the scientists?
Not in their books. They're physicists and things. Okay, anyway, so the, I was reading the Indigenous Peoples' History of the United States in two different book groups that I happened to be in, and that's kind of got me thinking about it even more. I kind of knew some of the history, was aware of it more than knowing it, and, but not in any depth or completeness. And so whereas clauses go onto some of the reasons that we should rethink Columbus Day. So first of all, I just want to say Columbus never set foot in North America. He was in the Caribbean. The, I want to, and the, I want to mention that there's this doctrine of discovery that came out of the papacy in 1455, which said that, to Portugal, if you find it, it's yours, regarding lands in other parts of the world, and it was extended to Spain in the next century. So what does it mean to discover a land where someone's already living? Does that make it yours, just because you don't think they're using it appropriately? Teddy Roosevelt actually had a great quote that said about the Philippines, just because they live there doesn't mean it's theirs, or something, I'm paraphrasing him, or it doesn't mean that it's not ours, or however he put it. And that's kind of this doctrine of discovery that has gone forward ever since then. Unfortunately, that discovery, you could say, well, you know, there's all this progress that's been made, but the discovery led to the devastation and extermination of many indigenous populations. In some areas of the Caribbean, the Taino and Arawak people were exterminated essentially. Also, Columbus started the slave trade, bringing indigenous peoples from the Caribbean back to Spain to be slaves there. And what people often don't realize is that this appropriation of large tracts of land in this country led to large farms, which then meant you need a lot of workers, and that leads you to how can you do that cheaply, and you enslave people to do it. And that's how it's worked. So I think there are a lot of other issues too, but those are kind of the chief ones. Just wanted to say a few words about the celebration of Columbus Day. It was first celebrated in this country, as far as I can tell, in about 1792, around, it was the 300th anniversary of the discovery of Columbus of the New World. And, but it didn't become a national holiday till, in this country, till the 1930s, when the Knights of Columbus, along with a leader in New York, convinced FDR to proclaim October 12th as a federal holiday, calling it Columbus Day. And it became later in the 70s, 1970s, it became Second Monday in October. Now, there are many cities in the United States, well over 30, that observe the Indigenous Peoples' Day, LA being the most recent, that just happened last week, along with several states, states of Alaska, Arizona, Vermont, I think there's one other one, anyway. And I want to leave you with a few quotes. So in 1992, when it was, the quintennial was approaching of this discovery, the National Council of Churches actually called on Christians not to celebrate the quintennial, and they said, "What represents newness of freedom, hope, and opportunity for some was the occasion for oppression, degradation, and genocide for others." And I think that puts it fairly well in perspective. And then, you know, people were saying, and I've talked to some people about it, they say, "Well, you want to rewrite history, you want to erase history?" No, I want to amplify history. I want to give a voice to the victims as well, and the victors have had their voice heard already. And that's how it usually is, that whoever wins writes the history. And we've seen that over and over. The other thing is, we should, people say, "Well, what do you want me to do about it?" Well, what I want people to do about it is, I don't think that you need to be responsible for what your ancestors did. However, you live in the present, and you need to do what's right with what you have inherited. Anyway, that's my feelings about this.
Okay. Any, yep.
I'd like to make a couple of points. One is that Columbus Day is not celebrated in many parts of the US.
Yes.
I mean, they don't take the day off, there's no banking holiday, there's no.
School holiday, yes.
No school holiday.
Like Texas doesn't have a school holiday.
California or Texas, I think. And so I, I just assumed it was a northeast thing. Maybe it's wide, more widespread than that, I don't know if you know, but because somehow we're closer to the, you know, we're the area that was the first part of the United States, and maybe, I don't know, and I'm curious actually as to why. I don't know if you know that.
I, I don't, I have it written down someplace. I have voluminous notes on this, but yeah. But there are, you're right, there are other places, and Texas was one that kind of surprised me. But when you look at Arizona and Alaska, they, Arizona calls it, I think, Native Peoples' Day, but they don't celebrate it as well, have indigenous peoples today in Alaska and Vermont.
But the idea of this reminds me of Hidden Brookline.
Yes.
And, you know, what do we know about the indigenous people who lived here in Brookline? And, you know, is there, are there any, is there any documents or histories that we can dig up about that? I think that, you know, this is about, this is about valuing everyone.
Right.
And valuing people who have been pretty much shut out for most of the time that we've occupied this region of the country. So I certainly support the idea of this, but I'm wondering whether this could lead to some further exploration and research about indigenous peoples who lived here and, you know, so that we could learn about our history and what, how we've behaved and changed those behaviors to be more egalitarian, more open, more accepting of diversity. And we have Diversity and Inclusion Board, so we need to make sure that we are diverse and inclusive.
Well, in terms of that history, I've actually been reading whatever I could. You know, we have a lovely Brookline Room, where there's a lot of stuff you can't take out, and there's stuff from the 1890s there, publications. And there are multiple places and on maps where they, and it's in this warrant article, I believe, too, where they have, they located an Indian fort, and there was another Indian encampment in the area near the Brookline Reservoir, what's now the Brookline Reservoir. But this fort, I think, was somewhere around Beacon and Powell in that area. So those are the things you know, and you, and there are some things written about pilgrims. I don't know if it's specifically in Brookline, but finding cornfields where they were growing corn and squash and other things together, which replenished the soil in an appropriate way. So I've talked to Barbara Brown of Hidden Brookline about this, and Tricia's been in contact with Ken List, and I've had some email contact with him. And if you look at the Brookline Historical Society, the history starts with the arrival of Europeans in the country, and then it's their, what they found in the, in the surrounding area in terms of evidence of indigenous peoples. So anyway, yes, there's a lot we don't know, and it wasn't, this was not written down, it's an oral history, and what's ever come down through the generations, might be able to recover some of it. But yeah, I think, I think it's a point well-taken, and that's one thing that we tried to bring into the warrant article.
Slutman-Green?
Yeah. I have to admit that I have a lot of problems with this warrant article. First of all, it should be no surprise why Texas, among other states, does not celebrate Columbus Day. They hate Italian immigrants and Catholics. And that sort of raises an issue with respect to this warrant article. And I sort of raise that in terms of the question of, does this really comport with our values of diversity and inclusion? For example, is this, my understanding is that this warrant article would replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day.
I don't think you can replace it, because it's a federal holiday.
Well, it's a federal holiday, so it would just be how we would celebrate it here. Well, so then, so yes, Columbus was Italian. He sailed for the Spanish. If you read his own writings, you would be appalled at what he had to say.
I'm not defending Columbus as a good person. I mean, he's absolutely a bad person, so that's a separate issue.
I believe October is already Italian-American. But yes, I understand that Italian-Americans have not always had an easy time in this country, and I think that's something you could, it doesn't have to include Columbus in that. So I'm Dutch, I'm an immigrant from Holland, but does that mean that I feel like I have to defend the Boers in South Africa and the Dutch in Indonesia for what they did? Absolutely not.
Separate question.
It is, but it's a related kind of question, I think.
Yeah. I ask that because, you know, there are alternatives to what you're proposing. There's a school in California that celebrates on the Second Monday of October, what they call Italian Heritage Indigenous Peoples' Day. The United Nations has a day, August 9th, of each year, called Indigenous Peoples' Day. I mean, there are alternatives to what seems to me sort of a warrant article that is going to create a lot of, I don't know, I mean, it's not consistent with our ideas of diversity and inclusion, I guess is what I'm saying.
I would like to say that it is, actually. I disagree with you on that, so.
Can I ask for a public comment and then bring it back to the board? Does anyone wish to speak on this? In the back, come on up, and then.
So yeah, this is the young woman, it's Keisha James, she's going to read Vishni's article, and also will introduce herself more appropriately.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Keisha James. I'm an enrolled member of the Aquinawampanawg tribe, and I'm also Lakota. I'm a Wellesley College freshman and also a former Brookline resident. I actually attended the Heath School, which is just up the road, and that's actually the first place that I encountered the Columbus Day myth, when myself and my twin brother were taught to sing "Columbus Discovered America" for you and me. And we only appeared once in the song, in the lyric. "He thought that golden spices would soon be rounded up. He called the people Indians, then brought them back home," which I always thought was a very strange way to describe the enslavement of a race of people. And so I knew the truth about Columbus. I didn't know anything about the transatlantic slave trade or about genocide, because I was in kindergarten, but I knew that something was wrong with forcing two Native American students to sing a song like that, and the principal actually came and apologized to me afterwards. I mean, years later, that's always struck me as being very odd that the principal knew that this was wrong, came to apologize to me, and yet, year after year, students still sing this song. And I think it really goes to show you that people in this country do know that Columbus Day is wrong, and yet we continue to perpetuate this myth. And I think that this needs to stop, because I always felt like I was being lied to by the public education system, because years later, everybody realizes this is a myth, and they wonder why they're taught it in the first place. And I was also really shocked to discover that my town that I loved so much didn't value me as an indigenous person, and I felt really isolated and alienated at the age of five. And so I think that it's very important that we stop celebrating Columbus Day, which celebrates a genocidal lunatic, and instead start celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, because really indigenous people are not recognized in this country at all, and we deserve a day. And I think it's very important that it be Columbus Day, because it's a complete reversal of this myth that is so detrimental to native youth and also to non-native youth, because they're learning myth, a myth, they're not learning the truth. So I hope that you will consider this resolution and make Columbus Day into Indigenous Peoples' Day. I also, Vishni wrote a really short statement, she's a junior at Brookline High School, and she says, "When I was little, I learned in school that Christopher Columbus sailed the Ocean Blue in 1492. He discovered America, and he was simply great for that. As I got older, I learned that he was truly far from great. Columbus and the men he brought to America were murderers and rapists. There was nothing great about them. By celebrating the holiday of Columbus Day, we in Brookline are celebrating his detrimental actions towards indigenous people. We are celebrating death, not discovery, when we celebrate Columbus Day. For the past so many years of celebrating this holiday, we have done so much wrong to the indigenous people in America. For a long time, they have requested to have this be Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the least we can do is comply with their request. By celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, we are also showing that Brookline is a town that represents justice. Columbus's actions didn't deserve justice, but the indigenous people who suffered from his brutality do. As a high school student, I want to strongly take a stand on this issue, because I want to show my peers that we should all stand for indigenous people. We learn in our history textbooks about the damage and death Columbus caused. Now we can actually take a stand about Columbus by instead celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day." Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Montowi Monroe, and I'm co-leader of United American Indians of New England. I'm also the lead organizer for Indigenous Peoples' Day Massachusetts. We were involved, for instance, last year and in 2015 with the Cambridge, Massachusetts Campaign to Institute Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm here to speak for myself and for Raquel Halsey, who's one of the petitioners. Raquel is a Brookline resident, who is the interim executive director of the North American Indians Center of Boston, and I am a former Brookline resident myself. And my tribal affiliation is Lakota. I would like to answer some of your questions after I'm done speaking, because I think I have, may have some more information for you. But I would like to start by saying that when we ask for Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's what we're asking for. We've been wronged for generations by the celebration of Columbus and by everything else that has happened to us. And I think a basic thing that we should understand as human beings, and that we tell our children, is that if we've done a real wrong to someone, it's really up to them to say what form the apology, the apology should take. I want to say one more thing. When people want to pull down the Confederate statues, as they've been doing all over the country, that doesn't mean that they're anti-white, it means that they're anti-Confederate. And when we want to pull down Columbus Day, that doesn't mean we're anti-Italian. Nobody amongst us is anti-Italian. It does mean we're anti-Columbus, and we need to get rid of that. And the apology that we're asking for, for having existed, as Keisha just said, with generation after generation of having this nonsense shoved down our throats about how Columbus was wonderful, and let's celebrate the genocide of indigenous peoples, the apology we're asking for that is to have Indigenous Peoples' Day instead, to try to make a beginning of reconciliation and making an apology to us for what has happened to us. It's impossible for me to come here in just a few minutes to explain the histories of indigenous peoples in the US. And we hope that people will go online or look at the papers before you and read the warrant article and also the explanation section, to get an idea of the monstrous acts of Columbus and his men, and also to learn a bit about some. of Columbus and his men, and also to learn a bit about some of the indigenous history here in Brookline. As indigenous peoples, our history and presence are rarely acknowledged and often erased in this country. We have been out on the front lines trying to stop pipelines and save the water. We are literally trying to save the earth, yet all too many people have no respect for us or what we have to say because they think of us as being cute little mascots, or they think of us even as being extinct. Almost every indigenous person I know right here in Massachusetts has been asked at some point, "Oh, aren't you guys all extinct? What do you think that means to us?" We live in a nation that celebrates Columbus, a man personally responsible for the slaughter and enslavement of many thousands of indigenous people. Among ourselves, we still speak of and think about the cataclysm that began with Columbus. Think of how our ancestors suffered and entire generations of our people were killed off throughout the Americas. And we think of the resulting enslavement of our African sisters and brothers whose lives are woven together with ours. Now, some teachers, religious and community leaders, and other people in Brookline have been educating about this since at least 1992, which was the time of the 500th anniversary of the arrival of Columbus. And the truth about Columbus has been here in plain view for a long time. People can't continue to deny the truth about Columbus. I understand when people in 1920 or 1930 thought that Columbus was an effective hero because they didn't have the information then, but we all have this information now. And this is the kind of thing that we're trying to bring before Town Meeting, is that kind of information. Additionally, many Brookline residents may assume that this land here in Brookline was empty before the English settlers showed up. And in fact, if you look at most of the things on the town website, it would appear that way. On the contrary, Brookline was an area, the muddy river area, was well-traveled by Massachusetts and other indigenous people, and there was likely at least one village near present-day Boylston and Elliott Streets. I want to tell you a few facts. There are more than 500 nations right here in the United States, and 75% of indigenous people do not live on reservations, yet we are constantly told to go back to our reservation as though we don't belong anywhere else. Indigenous peoples from throughout the Americas, including Wampanoag, Nipmuck, Ni'ma, Mayan, and many other nations, live right here in this metropolitan area. And I say this explicitly because of the fact that we are sometimes asked if we are extinct. Indigenous people nationally have extremely high rates of suicide and poverty. 13% of native people in the U.S. do not have running water or plumbing. Many more do not have safe drinking water. Half of our youth nationally do not graduate from high school. At the same time, we are also working hard to restore our battered cultures, to ensure that urban native people are welcomed and respected, to revive our indigenous languages that we were beaten for speaking, and much more. You may not even be aware of facts such as these about indigenous people, and that is one of the reasons that we are asking that indigenous people be centered for this one day, not a meaningless day on any random date that you choose to throw at us, but the second Monday in October. Indigenous Peoples' Day adds to the town of Brookline. We're not taking away, we're adding something to the town of Brookline in every possible way. It is also an opportunity for others to better appreciate how we can all become allies in breaking down the remaining cultural and institutional barriers of discrimination. Many institutions here in town talk about diversity and equity, yet indigenous people are somehow usually not even mentioned or acknowledged. We seek recognition of indigenous people because of the long-term damage and offense we have experienced as a result of the Columbus Day holiday. It changes the conversation from Columbus to indigenous history and our continuing survival and presence on our lands. What we are doing is part of a wave happening in cities and towns everywhere, from Los Angeles to Cambridge to Bangor, Maine just the other day, and Orono, Maine. And it's not just an East Coast thing. Columbus Day is celebrated, yes, it's true, there are some states and some towns that don't celebrate, but plenty of these places where it's happening, Seattle and other cities, they were celebrating Columbus Day before. We believe that in November, Brookline Town Meeting will be in an historic position to take a moral stand and acknowledge the indigenous peoples of the Americas. Just as Brookline got rid of its Warriors Indian Head Team Logo years ago, even though some are opposed to it due to so-called tradition, the time is long overdue for the town to stop honoring Christopher Columbus. If you want to contact us further, our website is IndigenousPeoplesDayMA.org. We would love to hear from you more, and we would love to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitolo? And I'll remind everyone, it's getting late.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and Italian-American. I want to thank Selectman Green for raising the concerns she raised. I think they're important. I grew up in an Italian household, in an Italian neighborhood, in an Italian town, Italian and Irish. And our culture is important to us, and that consists largely of things related to the church and food. You know, that's actually a lot of cultures, I suppose. We never talked about Columbus as being a person worthy of praise or someone important to our heritage. It came up every year, Columbus Day, but it was never part of my conversation in my family and in my experience. And today, my family celebrates our Italian heritage by going to the feasts and festivals in the summer in the North End. We have the Feast of the Seven Fishes in our own home every Christmas Eve. Our Italian-ness has nothing to do with Christopher Columbus, nothing. And so Brookline celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day does nothing to diminish our, my family's Italian culture and heritage and our pride in that. And so I hope, while I may not agree with every word in the warrant article, I think they've got it right, a hell of a lot more than they've got it wrong. And I hope that on the second Tuesday of October, we do think about Christopher Columbus a little bit, not to celebrate him, but to remind ourselves that we have an obligation to ensure that things even a little bit like that don't happen in our modern world. And geez, you know, it's not too far from imaginable. So I support this warrant article. I'm very grateful that Selectman Green raised the issue. I think it is easy to sort of forget about it, but as many Italians would say, "Forget about it." I support this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope you don't think that I was not acknowledging the problem with celebrating or not recognizing what Christopher Columbus did.
No, you were clear. You were absolutely clear that you recognized that the acts of Christopher Columbus were reprehensible. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alex Coleman?
Dr. Coleman.
Alex, it's just fine. I'll make a brief.
Please.
Yes. I support, for all the reasons that were already stated, I think Board Member Green's, prefacing my later comments, comments I think are important in the sense that, you know, as most of you know, I've been very active on the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, but I'm only speaking for myself here, that my sense of one of the main things that I've tried to achieve is for us to not have all the diversity fighting over pieces of the pie or against each other, but that there be acknowledgement of everybody. And I think that, as the previous speaker just mentioned, and I think it's a point well taken, and I think it's a question of how it's framed and what, for people to think about how to acknowledge Italian-Americans at this, you know, while acknowledging the truth about Christopher Columbus, which happened also to be during the time of the Spanish Inquisition, which was not very nice to Jewish people at the same time, which is another whole aspect of what was going on. So it's a great learning opportunity across the board, across diversity, but I do think we need to be mindful that some people may perceive it as an attempt to not acknowledge Italian-Americans. And so I think that it's really a question of how it's framed and to address that issue. But I strongly support the warrant article. Thank you.
Okay. I would, I'll ask a question. The warrant article calls for the selectmen to appoint a committee. We always have problems finding people willing to serve on committees, so I will ask the petitioners, there's only one present tonight, are you willing to serve on the committee you're advocating that we set up?
That was a yes.
Is this going to be a selectman's committee? I'm sorry, select person's committee? Or select committee? What am I supposed to say?
Yeah, well, I suspect when this hits the advisory committee, it's going to go through some wordsmithing. And I would encourage that process to happen. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Introduce yourself.
My name's Aiden Ashman. I've been a Brookline resident for basically all of my life.
Okay, welcome.
I support this, I've lost the word for what it is specifically right now.
Warrant article.
Warrant article. I believe it is something we must do, and it is an important stance, a moral obligation even, to make sure that we are standing for people and not over them. And we must honor their wishes and perspectives.
Okay, thank you. We have another one. Lloyd?
Good evening. Lloyd Chalnou, Chief Diversity Officer and Director of the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. This actually, warrant article hits personal to me. My family is from the island of Grenada, the third island that Christopher Columbus supposedly discovered on his third voyage. My dad's background is indigenous people who lived on the island at the time and actually lived in Trinidad and actually Venezuela. To make a long story short, the island Grenada was totally wiped out and decimated of the indigenous people. They didn't get us all, though. They managed to escape to Venezuela and actually still suffered the atrocities of Spanish rule and slavery and rape and all sorts of things, unspeakable things. My family talks about this all the time. I remember distinctly my dad coming home one day, and all three of the boys are singing about Christopher Columbus, all happy, and he got really upset. And he said, you know, he didn't realize what was being taught. You know, in Grenada, the word Christopher Columbus never comes up in any conversation. There's nothing about him on any plaque anywhere, in a lot of the Caribbean countries that it doesn't exist. Even Spain and Barcelona, where they used to have statues and plaques of Christopher Columbus, no longer exist. So it's something I think that we really need to take seriously. And I'm not saying that we're not doing that, but I do think that all the stuff that's associated with him, the negative stuff outweighs any of the positive of being this great explorer that he was. And I think that we do a disservice to indigenous folks when we don't sort of take pause and say we really need to change this national holiday into something that's more appropriate. So.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think this is going to go through the advisory process. We'll see what happens with it there and move on.
And we'll make our own comments.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. And now let's get back to our interviews, and I thank the folks for the override study committee. If you're on the override study committee, I guess you'll have to get used to some late nights.
Good practice.
Megan Levine.
Megan Levine, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and I'm happy to be here. Yeah, go ahead.
Tell us about yourself and your interest on the override study committee.
Sure.
And what would you bring to it?
Absolutely. So I've lived in Brookline for over 11 years, and I love it. It's a great town to live in. I went to college at Boston University, and every summer I actually lived in Brookline. And then when I graduated, I could not wait to move here. So it's a great place to be. I really enjoyed getting involved with Town Meeting, and I'm learning about municipal government. It's been a real great opportunity, really terrific opportunity to meet people throughout Brookline and also to learn how municipal government works. I'm a consultant. I do marketing and fundraising consulting for all different kinds of nonprofit organizations. I'm also a small business owner, and so I have experience with budgets and finance. I understand how money comes in, how it goes out, how you might want to go about raising it. And I'm interested in that type of work. I also have experience in strategic planning. I've served on combined Jewish philanthropies, Commission for Caring and Social Justice for six years, I think, now, and they do all the allocations to social service organizations in the Jewish community, as well as they're going through a five-year strategic plan, and I've been part of that process. So I'm comfortable with analysis, numbers, and data, and I'd really like to be part of this committee.
Everyone's looking at me.
It's your committee.
I have a question.
It's your committee, too.
How familiar are you with the last override process that we just underwent a couple years ago?
In 2014.
Yes.
So I actually spent some time on the website. I wasn't involved with it, but actually, one of the things that I think I could bring to this committee, and what I realized from looking at the materials from 2014, was that I could actually understand them. And I think that was really important because I was, you know, I'm very new to municipal government, and I think there are a lot of people that would like to be part of this process and conversation but aren't experts on municipal government. I thought in 2014, the committee did a really good job of putting things into plain language so that actually even I could understand it. And that's something that I would like to bring to the committee again, to make sure that all information is accessible to everyone. I think that's the way that we can engage not just the people that are on the committee and not just elected officials here, but actually the whole town of Brookline.
Until it's late.
It's okay.
How do you play along with others?
How do I play along with others? Pretty well.
Brookline fan box.
If you could illustrate some examples of working with difficult personalities.
Absolutely. So as I said, I own my own small business. You're always interacting with unique eccentric personalities in that world as an entrepreneur. I've managed several teams, and not even just managed them, but at City Year where I worked, the key was servant leadership. So everybody has something to learn and everybody has something to teach. So actually, at City Year, one of the keys is that the core members, who are between the ages of 1824, do a year of service, and often they're leading the staff in the work that they're doing. So I spend a lot of time thinking about, you know, leadership skills and also how do you create a strong team, not just a team that needs to be directed, but a team that's sort of self-managed. So I have a lot of experience with that and, you know, as a manager and also being part of a team.
How familiar are you with the town's fiscal policies, the way that we budget for free cash, and the way that money moves around the giant enterprise that is this community?
I have some familiarity with it through Town Meeting and also just some research I've done on my own, but I'm definitely not an expert on it. But I'd be more than willing and actually really excited to learn.
So, you know, I guess the trade-offs that this committee's going to be looking at is the requests from the various departments, especially the schools. is the requests from the various departments, especially the schools, for more resources, weighing, weighing, weighing it against the populace's ability to pay, and then the political calculation of how much can we put on the ballot that will actually get passed. So how do you see all those different competing interests? How do you balance that? And you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think the first thing is to listen. And so I think the key is to engage all the stakeholders and really listen, not to just offer solutions outright, but to understand the competing priorities and to bring people to the table, as many people as possible and as time allows, to, to really understand. I think there will be times where decisions need to be made, and there's always trade-offs. But I think the key, and especially in this community, is something I've really enjoyed. You know, when I was running for Town Meeting, my favorite part was going out and talking to constituents and people that lived in Precinct Three. There were definitely priorities that, that different people believed in. They didn't all mesh well with each other all the time, but they're still able to live happily in our precinct in Precinct Three. I just think the key is to, to listen and bring people to the table and let them have a chance to express their opinion. You can't always solve the problem, but you definitely can always listen.
Any other questions?
This will probably be a major time commitment. Are you up for the task?
Yeah, so I'm, actually, because I work for myself, I have a lot of flexibility in terms of the time and the projects that I'm working on. I'm looking for something that will be a time commitment. I really want to get involved with the work that happens in this community, and so this is really an appealing opportunity to get involved with this work.
Okay. Any other, I think, that's, yeah.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell us about your interest in this. What can you bring to it?
Certainly. Well, first, thank you all for having me, so I have the opportunity to interview with you all. My interest in this is that as a new Town Meeting member that was elected this past May in Precinct 14, I'm really interested in making sure that the town is doing everything it needs to do to ensure that its commitments to the future and particularly to its youngest residents, many of whom don't have the opportunity to vote, are met. That's why I got involved in Town Meeting in the first place. So when I learned about the opportunity to serve on the override study committee and really examine things that would be included and things that might not be, I decided that that would be an opportunity worth exploring.
What is your background pertaining to data and campaign messaging?
Sure. So I'm a recent MIT alumnus. I've studied economics, political science, and minored in management, so I'm pretty fluent in data. That's-
Is that modeling data?
Yes. I've had the, yeah, I, I've worked with financial modeling data in research and also in projects and exercises, as well as the workplace. On the political messaging side, I'm a political campaign operative. That's what I do. So I bring a pretty extensive messaging background and understanding and a way of framing issues so that I think they resonate most clearly and, I believe, accurately with voters and potential supporters.
So I think that, that expertise comes in in making sure that whatever this committee does is clear. I don't think it's appropriate for the override study committee to be, in its deliberations, actively advocating for a certain position. I think the job of any override study committee is to examine the information and draw reasonable conclusions and write an impartial and balanced report that clearly makes a recommendation. We're not, you know, engage, using public resources to engage in a conspiracy to push through a tax increase.
No, no, no. I, I, I think that messaging, I think that messaging and communication is a tool, and it's a tool that can be used to deceive or manipulate, or it can be a tool to help people that, to be quite honest, aren't very in tune with the day-to-day operations of Brookline so that they can understand their choices clearly as possible and what the choice they have in front of them is, and have, have that choice be a real choice and an honest choice.
See, the, the way I see this committee is, and, and the way other override study committees in the past have worked, we kind of look to the committee as kind of a blue-ribbon committee to, with expertise and credibility, who, who can advise us on the priorities to put before the taxpayers and the people who are going to vote to raise their taxes. And I think, you know, taxation and the ability to tax, you know, is, is a very powerful thing, and it can, it can bankrupt people, and it, it's a, it's something we, we need to be very prudent and judicious and, and careful. And, and I think when we go to the taxpayers and say, yeah, we think, we think you should vote to raise your taxes by, you know, an amount of money, I think, you know, we're looking to this committee to kind of give it the, a good scrubbing, and, and, and I think we're, we're looking for advice on, and, 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 and really, a group of people can dig into the details and, and assure us that the town is, you know, the, the ask that we're making of the taxpayers is a prudent ask, and we've done everything we can to hold the taxes down, and yet, and I don't think that's conservative or liberal. That's just, I think, the, the way we ought to do business, but-
I would agree with that.
Preaching, I guess. There's not a question in there. But anyway, well, that's the way I see the committee, and that's, that's the way the committees have worked in the past. Yep.
Well, I, I'm just thinking back to the committees, you know, in 1994, our first general override, there was an override study committee, and I think that, you know, its job was to examine the issues in the town and the schools, both. That override was, you know, split sort of half and half in terms of operational needs and where we were deficient and what we could perhaps do better and be more efficient and not need to spend that additional money, but where we did need to, you know, the, the report was clear. So I think that's, that is, I see, what I see is the job, is to basically follow that model, and I think that was followed, followed in 2008, and it was followed in 2000, for the 2015 override, and then, and now, you know, they basically said, I think, last time, that we would need another override in three years, so here we are.
You yourself are a Brookline High School graduate?
That is correct.
And your sister is currently going through the school system here in Brookline?
That is correct. So I first moved to Brookline in 1998. I began kindergarten at the Lincoln School in 1999 and was a class of 2012 graduate of Brookline High School. My brother is a class of 2017 graduate of Brookline High School, and my sister is currently just beginning the seventh grade at the Heath School.
Do you see any programmatic differences between your experience and your sister's experience, and will that, will you bring that experience possibly to the committee?
I certainly see differences. Yeah, I mean, for one, I didn't eat lunch at 10:30 in the morning when I was in the school system. No, I think that crowding is a real, crowding's a real serious problem. I mean, when I started in the Brookline schools, the place that I live now is not a buffer zone. It is a buffer zone now. I'm, I went to Lincoln, my sister goes to Heath, same school, same, or sorry, different schools, same building that we live in. It's a five-minute walk to Lincoln from where I live. It's a much longer walk to get to Heath. So I, I see that, and I, I see, I think that I can offer, I think I can offer a diverse array of perspectives to the committee. One, because I do have family still in the schools. At the same time, I'm a fairly young person whom a lot of people in my peer group can't afford to move back into Brookline. So on one hand, the override can provide resources that I think would improve the schooling experience for the youngest people among us. On the other hand, I'm very conscious of the fact that Brookline's already a difficult place for people my age to live. So it's a, it's a series of trade-offs that I take very seriously and really, I think, understand multiple sides to.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Rudolph. Sorry to keep you so late. Sorry to keep everybody so late.
Yeah, I was going to say, you guys have to sit in those chairs all night, that's it. At least they're big and comfortable.
Well, we've been, we've been sitting in chairs since five.
Yeah, I was going to say, you've been no longer than I have. So, so yeah, my, my name is Jeff Rudolph. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I would love to answer your questions. I know you have my resume and some of the questionnaire that I filled out. Just a couple of quick notes about myself and why I'd like to serve on this committee. I've lived in Brookline. My wife and I have lived here for 17 years, minus five years when we lived in Washington, DC, when my wife worked for the National Cancer Institute. We've always loved living here, and we are now raising our kids here. Both of my kids go to Pierce, right over my shoulder, which is part of the reason why I'd like to be on this committee. I want to make sure we have representation of people on the committee that have children that are in our schools. Schools are super important to me, as obviously they are to a lot of people in our town, which is one of the great reasons that we love to live here, and a lot of people love to live in Brookline. I am not a pure finance guy or a tax guy by any means, but I've spent a lot of time in, in management positions. I work at a company where I work in our operations department. We spend a lot of time looking at the projects that we want to work on, trying to evaluate what the ROI is, figure out what we're going to greenlight, what we're not going to. There's always a lot of hard decisions on where we're going to spend our money. And obviously, it's from a corporate standpoint where we're trying to make money, which is a little bit different than this situation, but at the end of the day, a lot of the same, I feel like a lot of the skills are the same. Communication's very key, listening to stakeholders, working with all the constituents, if you will, that either want to see something go forward or don't want to see something go forward. I feel like a lot of those same skills will be very relevant here. So you are all right. It is definitely late, and I know we're all tired, so that's my short elevator speech, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
This is going to be a concentrated sprint. So there'll, it'll be a bit of a time commitment. I don't know.
Absolutely.
It'll be at least like a meeting a week or something like that.
Approximately, yeah. At, at the very least, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, that'll be something for me to interleave between coaching soccer and, you know, spending time with my kids and, and work, but this is something I'm, I'm very passionate about and something I'm willing to put the time in for. It is nice to have the sprint because you can really focus on it, you know, get it done, and then you know that, you know, this isn't going to take, you know, years and years and years. So I'm absolutely up for the challenge. I, I have always been a hard worker. The woman left who was here earlier, I, my first job was when I was 12 years old, not working at McKinsey, but delivering newspapers. So I have always found something to do with my time. It's always been something I've been passionate about, and so this is something I'd like to put my time into.
Okay. You have any experience, looking at municipal finance or?
No, I have, I, I don't have any experience.
Been on the corporate side?
Always been on the corporate side, yeah.
So I know that you are a parent and that you are very passionate about the schools, but you are also a homeowner.
Yes, I am. And I also live on Greeno Street, right down from the high school. So there's many different ways that, you know, high school expansion would affect me, not only from my kids going there, but from my property value, but also from the construction, because it's obviously going to take some time to do that. Is it going to change traffic patterns, or are the guys going to be jackhammering at what hours of the night, this sort of thing? So, you know, absolutely. I've, I've lived as both a renter and a homeowner within Brookline, very fortunate to, to own my house now. So I, I have, I have many different ways of thinking about what this override study would look like, and just want to get all of the facts, understand everything that's there, and really be able to make a good recommendation, but have it be impartial so that the voters can vote on it.
Okay. Any other?
You have IT experience? How would that be possibly beneficial to this kind of committee?
So certainly from a, from a data analysis standpoint, you know, I, I will admit that I do like to nerd out on the data once in a while. I try to do less of that these days and spend more time talking to people, but certainly from a background, I used to do much more technical work. There was a lot of number crunching and, you know, beyond Excel and that sort of thing. But these days, it's mostly budgets and, you know, certainly all of the tools and IT considerations that you would think of these days. I, I am not as, as much into, you know, there's all the different communication tools these days. You know, being, being 43, I'm not on the Snapchat and all this kind of stuff, but certainly I understand, you know, we'll need to work with some people on how we want to communicate and messaging going forward. That's not my expertise, but certainly aware of those tools.
And you also mentioned that you have an operations background.
Yep.
Overrides are pretty much mostly operational in their, at least this in their nature. What, what kind of expertise do you see you bringing to the committee? Because not everybody understands operations.
Sure, sure, sure. So that's a great question. You know, drawing upon my, my education, I have an MBA from Boston University from 15 years ago now, it seems like just yesterday. Really, really being able from an operations standpoint to study how, how the projects that we want to work on are working, where the money is coming in, going out, how all the pieces fit together. You know, again, there's, there's a lot of math and there's a lot of technical pieces that I've done in different capacities, trying to tie that all back in to who all the stakeholders are and how they want to be able to, you know, use their money going forward. It's, again, like, a lot of the stuff that I'm doing today is, is much more technical, and I would probably bore you going through it, but a, a lot of the, a lot of the processes is the same. How you want to tackle the problem, talk to people, think about what the requirements are for what you want to do, come up with a plan, review it, get feedback, tweak it, and then get into a mode where you're planning out how that's going to work, who's going to do what at what time, schedules, you know, completion dates, that sort of thing.
Awesome. One last, sorry. Oh, gosh. Oh, Megan brought this up. The last override study committee did a really good job of putting things in layman's terms.
Absolutely.
I think you have a background in engineering.
That's true.
So would you be able to help translate very technical stuff into more digestible for other audiences?
For the, for the folks in our community. Yeah, I feel that I would be good at doing that. That's my undergrad background, computer engineering, but I, I have spent a lot of time, and I do spend a lot of time in my job today, speaking to our executive teams and our CFO and trying to say, hey, I realize that I'm asking you for a lot of money, here's why I'm doing that, you know? I'm not going to get into all the bits and bytes anymore down here, but I'm going to say, you know, these are, this is the value that we want to bring, and this is why. I feel that I'm pretty good at doing that in, in my job. So again, a lot of those same skills would apply here, breaking it down to whatever level we need to communicate with the people in our town who are ultimately going to be voting on this. So I feel like I would be able to do a good job of that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure. We've got through, what, one, two, three, four, seven, five, six, seven, eight interviews today. Wow. Okay. Okay. Thank you all for, uh, coming. Um, we have one last item of business and that's the, uh, warrant article nineteen. Alex Coleman is the petitioner. Just, uh, I'm looking at the clock, so try to be...
Saving the best for last.
Yes.
And try to be as succinct as possible.
I will be.
And try to think of this as a rehearsal for town meeting.
I, we'll do even better than that. I'll try to be briefer. I, let me, the thought that comes to my mind is, "The time has come," the waller said, "to speak of many things, of shoes and ships and ceiling wax and whether pigs have wings and whether the sea is boiling hot, of cabbages and..." What is this? Yeah, well, I was gonna try and say, it's late for me to, "cabbages and royalty." And that's the point that I'm trying to make. Uh, language, there's so many things, you know, when I've spoken to people about this warrant article, which basically would say, "Look, the time has come and I think people aren't really..." I'm listening, I know myself. I make slips all the time around gendered language. And if every, if anybody is not going to do it, it's probably gonna be me. And I still do it. Um, but I want to say that I think the time has come and that is very important. And we've seen it when, um, we look at the changes, when we change "fired man" to "firefighter", "police officer," uh, "male carrier." It took getting used to, um, but why? Think about it for a minute. When you say "select man" or "select woman," and at this point, we're gonna, yeah, I'm even gonna say, just don't even get into the non-gender binary part of it. Just keep it just simple that way. Why are we calling out that distinction as opposed to how much hair somebody has, how tall they are, their eye color, what other diversity they may represent? Why is it relevant in their context on the role of the board? And by continue, you know, some people say, "Well, we have so many more important things to do." And what I would argue is that by using gender neutral language, we're setting our minds. It, it, it's a thought process that, that I know, I, those of you who've been on the board can do, because I've seen when the, uh, uh, when, uh, Board Member Green was active on the subcommittee, uh, proposing the warrant article, at the same time as proposing the resolution for gender identity and expression inclusion as a protected class, and raised the issue of gender identity and expression, and if you were really serious, using gender neutral language and presented some suggestions of how to do that, including a little written statement. The next draft used it. So I know you can do it. And on the Commission for Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations, I've now been on it for the newly created one for over five years. And I have to say, and even as the chair, I've gotten, prior to chair, that, that I've gotten a lot of pushback, because I say, "I feel that we should use, set ourselves as an example and use in our agenda and our way of speaking, gender-inclusive, non-gendered language." And there's been some pushback. However, people are starting to channel me even when I'm not there. And I'll, so I want to point out a couple of things that, um, I think are important. One is that one gender, gender identity, gender expression, uh, sex, sexual orientation, it's not binary. For some people it is, but for most people it isn't in some degree. And in one's role as a member of town governance and in interacting with people in the community, why call out that perceived, often correctly or incorrectly, difference? It doesn't make sense. And I would just point out, as I, I'm not gonna summarize what's already in, in here, um, but that in terms of my purpose and statement of intent, the intent is, uh, to move people forward, because it does make a difference. And it makes a difference as we try to figure out how to say something. It calls attention to our internalized bias. I mean, if you think about, I mean, if people say God is, if those who have any kind of faith, whatever, when they say, "God is not always he, think of God as she," does that change how you think about God? I mean, if you talk about somebody, again, it used to be, it didn't matter when there would be reports against, about crimes, and they only would name somebody if they belonged to minority or disenfranchised community and not a privileged community. We realized that it didn't matter what the language was. And so I'm trying to move us to the future ahead of time, um, by this motion. I just would further say that, you know, I, I put in, in, in this, I put down the town of, of the city of Newton, because they're right next door, I know there's this competition going on, and they had their charter. Um, I would point out that, um, as far as I can see, there is nothing in the statutes that preclude this. And in fact, I spoke with, um, an attorney from the Secretary of State's office, who said, "Oh yeah, we can't, we call them select boards." And they've come about in several different ways. I just want to address two things. One is, uh, you know, I'm anticipating some questions, let me try to, 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 if you're not thinking about them now, you'll think about them afterwards. So, one is, okay, in here I'm saying, you know, change select, the, the BOS, the Board of Selectmen, or the Board, to the Select Board. Now, that would not have been my first choice of language, because this doesn't articulate what you really do. But that's been, over twenty places have used that same term. And it's this close, so I figured, go with it. Um, the second thing is, the part of it that has to do with, uh, the town documents, is that gonna be overly onerous? Okay? I would suggest not, because I think anything that's already existing, um, there are ways, uh, that is in use, there's a way of putting a statement at the beginning, so you don't have to redo everything that's there. I mean, I see this as a process. And that the same thing with the town website, um, that, you know, there are certain times where it just says "he slash she." Now, in my, um, in my intent, purpose and summary, I indicate that there, uh, the state legislature, I don't know if it comes from the general court of the legislature, but there's a guy for drafting legislation that says, it should be gender neutral. Now, some of the examples I use are dated examples, but, um, I think that there's been a recognition that's important to do. And so I would just encourage very strongly the BOS to support the warrant. And I am happy to entertain any questions.
So, let me ask the, I, I, I frankly don't have a problem with what you're trying to do, um, but I do have a problem with the form, this is getting into the nitty-gritty of legislative construction. Um, so my first question, have you run the language here by town council?
I did not run the language by town council. I ran the language by...
Because typically, the way these things work is they'll say, "Section, amend section three oh, substitute the word 'select board' for the word 'select men' in section three ten, three eleven, four oh eight," and you, and you go through the whole...
Yeah, I, okay.
Right. And, and this doesn't do that.
This doesn't do that. However, having worked with town council previously on changing the bylaws, um, when we were in phase two of the gender, adding gender identity and expression, it's really actually quite simple with, uh, even for somebody like me who's a really low-tech person, because you just do a search of the bylaws.
But that's not the way it works. So what I would suggest, if you're serious about this, what I would suggest...
No, I'm not, obviously not serious about it.
What I would suggest you do is sit down with town council and come up with the correct legislative construction and, and if, if you want to get this passed, if, if you, if you don't want to get this passed, don't take my advice.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to minimize it, but I don't understand why it has to be in that form. Could you explain that to me?
Because that's the way you amend law.
It has to be directive. You have to tell us exactly what you want done. You can't say, "Well, just replace this word with this word and go forth and..."
Everywhere in the...
In the bylaw. It's gotta be very specific as to what you want done.
Right. Okay. So then, in, in, in B, amend the town bylaws to require the use of gender neutral language. So what you have to say is, "We're gonna create a new section, give it a number," and you'd get the number from town council, which says, boom da boom da boom, whatever it's gonna, so...
Wait, 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 say that, say that one more. I know it's late. Uh, could you just say that another way? I don't quite understand what you're trying to say.
I think maybe all that's relevant is you need to talk to town council to get the language that she believes would be appropriate here. I don't know if I agree that, that language in A is not gonna work. I mean, the statute that changed the name of my organization used this, this approach. Of course, Massachusetts statutes aren't written very well generally, but, you know, just talk to town council, get this right. I mean...
I'm happy to talk with town council. I have no problem with town council. Um, again, I'm learning a lot, we, we're the only, if, you may, you may or may not know this, but having spoken to the town clerk, we're the only town, we're the largest town, I guess, in the country, and we're the only one that's incorporated under forty-three A. Um, uh, see, I'm, I did a lot of, little research on this one. And, you know, again, and I, I just would say, I'm happy to, uh, speak with town council. Um, I, you know, it may be a multi-phase process.
So then, how, how would B work? Um, let's, let's assume we can get B into the correct legislative format. Um, so, so let's say one of our lawyers writes a letter or, 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 or writes a brief in a, in a lawsuit, um, that's a town document, it goes to court, then opposing council can then say, "Oh, this brief, because you have a, a, a gender-specific word, is not valid" and challenges the document as a valid town document? And, and could get a lawsuit thrown out? Would that be possible? It's a...
Far-fetched. Way too far-fetched.
And we thought being transparent was far-fetched, so, you know, my definition of far-fetched has changed.
So I was under the impression that, uh, in order to legally change the name of the executive branch of town government, it required not only amending the bylaw, but you had to also change the town or city charter.
We don't have one.
We don't have a charter?
Correct. We, we, that's what, that's the reference to forty-three A. We're the only, see the things that, you learn? We're the only town that does not. It used to be us, the town of Brookline and Framingham until they became a city. We do not have it. And that's how the, some of the other places changed the name of the Board to the Select Board by changing the charter. Sometimes the charter study committee made a recommendation first and then town meeting passed it. Sometimes it worked the other way. Sometimes it was the, uh, the BOS or the equivalent, it changed, just changed it through usage. And then for certain legal things, would write, you know, formerly known as the Board of Selectmen. And there is definition language in some of the other sections that suggests anything, any other group that's using, basically doing the same functions under the definitions would be considered a BO, Board of Selectmen.
So we don't have to get permission from the general court, uh, to make this change? We can...
Not, not, not according to my conversation with the elections, the Secretary of State and the municipalities attorneys. I mean, that, 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 that's why, why I called them and, and it wasn't trying to dismiss town council, it was trying to come up with all this stuff and get answers to what I thought were going to be relatively simple questions that turned out obviously not to be.
Mr. Frye, would you like to speak on this?
I would.
Come on up, join the party.
I hope maybe some of my comments here will address some of those that you have already...
For the record, just say your name.
Oh yeah, I'm Ernie Frye, uh, town meeting member, precinct seven. Um, okay, I guess that's, uh, that's close enough for identification. Um, thank you, Alex, for, uh, bringing forward this warrant article to discuss, to, to encourage legitimate discussion on this topic and the name that should be assigned to our governing committee. I have concerns about the format of this warrant article and whether the proposed language, which does not reference the specific parts of the bylaws that are to be changed, may not be in acceptable form. Others with a higher pay grade than mine should resolve this matter. However, with selectmen mentioned two-hundred-and-seventy-six times in the current town bylaws, it is obvious that redrafting all the sections affected by this proposal would be an onerous task. But this might be necessary to be sure that any approved changes are properly documented. BOS, a cryptic reference to the Board of Selectmen, is used twenty-two times, all in bylaws three-point-one-four and five-point-five, both of which were modified by recent town meeting in a warrant article proposed by the Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations Commission. This reference might also need to change. While the warrant article does not reference the zoning bylaws, selectmen is also mentioned therein seven times.
Really?
I suggest a request to expand the wording of this warrant article to include the zoning bylaws.
Interesting.
There shall be, there shall also be need to be changes made to the town website, but I believe those changes would be outside of the scope of the town meeting process. The TMMA listserv garnered comment regarding the term "Board of Selectmen," but there has not been consensus on what name should be assigned to our governing body. My personal preference is executive board, led by a chair and addressed as Mr. Chair or Madam Chair as appropriate. Members of the board could be referred to as Member Last Name when calling for votes or as needed for other personal reference needs. I'm not sure the town meeting will be able to pass this warrant article, mostly because there may not be consensus on the name that should reference our governing body. I believe this warrant article should be a resolution asking for a town committee to conduct open hearings on the name that should be assigned to the group currently referred to as the Board of Selectmen. In my opinion, the most appropriate group to receive this task should be the Commission on Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations. Once a consensus has been reached on the name of the governing body, the commission should prepare a warrant article for next town meeting reflecting the language changes conforming to that consensus. Full disclosure, I am no longer a commissioner of the aforementioned commission, but if they agreed, I'd be happy to work with the commission should they be assigned this task. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. You brought some interesting facts. Any, uh, anyone else wish to speak? Um, so my first piece of advice to Alex is, go, go see town council and get this in the right form. Um, so that, if, if you don't do it before the advisory committee, I said, they're gonna have you do it, so you might as well just take the bull by the horns and do it.
Would he have to pass that by the moderator?
Yes, yes.
Be aware of that.
Yeah, and then whatever, whatever you come up with, you want to run it by the moderator, Sandy Gatsby?
As I did this.
Right. Yeah. So, um, so...
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure, come on up. Sure, come on up.
What if town council has one take on it? And there are others in state government who have another take on it? What's your suggestion about how to handle? I mean, I'm just having, I think, I don't have a conflict with town council. We work very collaboratively on the other bylaw thing, so I understand the process.
Unless it's the attorney general, I'd go with town council.
Well, actually, I did, that's why I'm asking, because I was, that was one of the offices I did contact.
Did the attorney general's office approve this language?
No, that I, no, full disclosure, I called, and it was the day, it was the day of, I had to get the signatures, okay? So this is the contract. So, but it was a person who certifies town meeting results.
So you asked them...
I said, is there anything special that I need to include in a bylaw to change the name of the board?
Okay.
So I was told, I haven't heard it done by a bylaw change, but that's because there are no other towns with charter, that don't have a charter. And, but as far as I know, there's nothing else. But I'm not saying that that's...
But they didn't opine on...
No, they did not. Absolutely.
Of the form of the warrant article, so that it works within our framework.
Right. And I'm also happy, I mean, I see the Ernie's offer, you know, regarding the zoning, I have no problem with that, no problem with meeting with town council. And I appreciate it.
Zoning will be outside the scope of the warrant article, so that, that's not going to be allowed. That's just the way that...
Hey, zoning, there's enough other problems that the zoning has, that we could take that on another time.
Well, I don't think you can have conflicting...
You can't have the general bylaw say one thing and the zoning bylaw say something different.
Exactly. I think you need to have, we're going to need to have it, we're going to have to fix it somehow.
Well, we actually, I'm sorry.
If we're going to have a select board in the general bylaws, then we need a select board in the zoning bylaws. So I think...
I kind of like Mr. Frye's suggestion that we refer to...
I would refer it to CTO and S.
To what?
The Committee on Town Organization and Structure. And I say that because the diversity committee has a lot on its plate right now.
Yes.
And I think the Committee on Town Organization and Structure is set up to chew on these big issues, and quite frankly, their plate isn't quite as full.
Okay. And the point that I'm trying to make is, again, I'm happy to do it, however it has to be done, but I think the time has come that this, you know, calling people out and naming genders is really, we're way past that at this point in time. And I think that that...
So I don't think anybody on this board has yet said, no way, I'm voting against this. I think my sense of the board is that we're all supportive of the concept, or maybe in some cases, agnostic about what we're called. But we're talking about...
Right.
How do we...
No, no, I understand what you're saying, and I hear it as trying to be helpful, and I take it that way. And I appreciate it.
Right. So if you want to do this, and we should do it, let's do it right.
Absolutely.
And it may take another iteration to get it right.
Hey, you know what? You know, guess there's somewhere, right?
Okay. Okay, so I think, unless anyone wishes, anyone else wishes to speak on this, I think we're done for the evening. Thank you. Thank you.